I'm Ed Silva, I'm the city manager. With me tonight, I have Vice Mayor Natalie Orbis. And I have some of the staff. I have our police chief, our major, our NROs, and I also have our city engineer, co-compliance, here to answer any and all questions. Let me, this is the first town hall I've ever done here. I've done them in the past in other places. Usually, I don't like to have more than a few questions at a time, so that everybody has a chance to talk, but this is a small group, so I'm gonna be a little bit more lenient with that. I do want to start with saying, "Thank you very much. We've heard your concerns. We understand the concerns." We have been working in the background trying to resolve a lot of the concerns, and I'd kinda like to go through a little bit of the history on what's happened and what's occurred, and then I'm gonna basically turn it over to listen to the residents. As we all know, the area around Sylvania Elementary School has become a little bit of a nightmare for all the residents that live in that area. I do want to go over a little bit of the timeline. The very first step on things that went wrong there is state statute allowed the aides for autism children to attend school with them, and unfortunately, we just did not, the school did not have the facilities, and we did not have a heads up, nor we did, we know that this was really gonna blossom overnight the way it did. For reasons that I'm not going to, this is not about casting blame, this is just about putting out the things that have happened. For some reason, the school had closed their auxiliary lot on the side, and that also exacerbated the problem and made it worse, because if we had, they had no parking whatsoever for any of the aides. In the past, somewhere along the way, we added curbing to some of the swales on the north side of the school, which didn't allow cars to park in the swale by the open field by the school. Another thing that's happening at the school also right now is at dismissal time. For some reason, instead of like most other schools where there's a drop-off line that you go through, they say the kid, they bring him to your car, they're basically opening up their doors, which makes it for the parents to have to wanna try to park and walk and grab their children and bring them back. That is something that we're still having a little bit of a discussion with the school board on. We understand that all of your swales and all of your front yards look like this. We get it, we understand. We've taken some steps here. We have recently posted, I'm sure you've seen them, some no parking signs in some of the areas around the neighborhood. We worked very diligently with the school and the school board to open up that auxiliary lot, so now, not all the aides, but a good portion of the aides are able to park in that parking lot. We are working on doing some on-street parking solutions, which we'll talk about in a minute. We have and are gonna continue to have discussions with the school board and the school on the dismissal, because we think it's, it doesn't make sense for them to do the dismissal the way it is. I don't think it's safe, frankly. I don't think it's the right way of doing it. And we will begin, Chief, on the 27th? We're in the warning period right now, but on January 27th, the warnings will turn into tickets for the people that park illegally where we have no parking signs. I don't know if anybody's here for the shopping center issue. Is anybody here about the shopping center issue, or do all, you all for the Sylvania? Sylvania, so I won't touch the shopping center now. And with that, as you, as I said, we know we've seen the destruction for your swales, which is just not acceptable to us as a city, nor do I believe it's acceptable to you all as residents. We've been reading the emails, and this is another shot of the same general area. This is the, this is an ordinance that our commission brought in front of us and have it approved, and these are the streets where we'll only allow residential parking from, in these four streets. And if we have to expand this, we will, but for right now, this is where it's starting. This is a proposal that our city engineer has come up with for us to be able to do some on-street parking in some of these areas. This will allow for an additional 20 to 25 parking spaces, which should remove all the cars parked in front of everybody's houses in the swales. And this is, I think, this is the shopping center, so I'm gonna skip this for right now. You should have gotten, or if you haven't gotten, Yvonne in the back, please see her on the way out. She's gonna be giving you the residential decals that you're gonna be hanging from your mirrors, so that we know that you're one of our residents and you don't get a ticket. And we will, like I said, the parking permit is like the one on the far left-hand corner of the TV screen. You hang it from your mirror. That way, we know it's, it's you, that it's a resident, and that way, you won't get a ticket. Place, but this is the only way that we have of being able to enforce this, and with that, I'm ready to listen to any and all of your concerns. I will say that we also will be restoring the swales. Once, a little bit further down the line, we will be restoring the swales. We will be re-sodding all those swales. So, if you can, if you can come up and say your name and address and, and your concerns, please.
Hi, how are you? Vivian San, address is 6017 Southwest 16. So, first of all, thank you so much for doing all this work. Obviously, you've heard the concerns. My neighbor here, Liddy and George, her husband, we're the ones that started this campaign to have other people in the neighborhood sign a petition and the attention of yourselves. And we came to this meeting expecting that we would be included in that "don't park here" sort of area, and you fell short, because it's beyond that area. They also park in front of my neighbor on the left, my neighbor on the, on the right. So, it's all the way up to 62nd Street that these signs should be expanded to, okay? 62nd Avenue, exactly. And if you were to do that, we would be extremely, extremely happy and very proud that you guys have listened to all of us, not just Sylvania, you know, geographic surroundings. Thank you.
We will, I will bring this up to the commission's attention. Obviously, the vice mayor's here. She's very concerned. As is all the commission is very concerned about the parking issue and trying to get it resolved, and we will work diligently to do it. The sodding, we will, we will go in sometime within the next two months. We will go in and do the sodding, probably sooner than that, but I just want, I'd rather under-promise and over-deliver and make sure that I get it done the correct way. Yes, ma'am, I duly noted. I wrote this down. Anybody else have any concerns, any questions?
Hi, I'm Connie. I'm at, I'm near in front of the school, 5929 Southwest 16th Terrace. Yeah, first, I think we are, we are all super appreciative of everything that's progressed up until this point. I think one thing that is a priority for a lot of us residents is that green space. We love living here. We love the greenery, all the trees you put in this year. So, I think there's, I mean, just looking at the map, would there be a conflict with the trees you've already planted? And then, my second kind of layer of thinking is, I don't want to introduce too much like just concreting and paving over a lot of this green space. So, I know it's a compromise, right? We want to be able to find a solution, but we also want to retain this green space.
We will not be, we will work very diligently to save as many of the trees as we possibly can, and we're not gonna pave it. This will be, the curb, curb blocking, which allows the grass to grow, but it stabilizes the area so it doesn't become just dust. It's, it's a nice paver-type pattern that has the grass that grows in between the pavers, but that will allow us to use that as parking and keep the green aspects of the swales, and will eliminate all the dust and, well, frankly, what the pictures look like there. As to the trees, yes, we spent, we spent a lot of, a lot of hard time and work, thanks to the, thanks to this mayor and the vice mayor and our commission to ensure that we would meet our go, our goals for trees. We're not in the business of removing trees, so we'll work around the trees as much as we can.
Cool, thank you.
I'm not gonna go up there, but I'm here. I want to say thank you to Vice Mayor Miliana Orbis, who has, she's probably on my favorites list by now. She does get text messages from myself and the neighbor directly next to the school, so thank you for your work. I know it hasn't been easy. I was a teacher, so I know the struggles that it takes to deal with the school board and the school system. So, I guess my initial question is, and in conversation with Natalie, I know that this is, in a way, kind of like a temporary fix. We don't know if it's a forever fix. And I guess my first question is, like, these parking permits are great if we're home to give them to the people, but, I mean, it's not gonna be the first time that my lawn guy calls me saying he's coming and I'm not there. So, what is kind of the long-term vision into this being the case? I know that the signs that were put up are resident parking, not necessarily like no parking Monday through Friday within a certain amount of time. So, has there been like thought given to that? I don't know. I guess that's my question.
Well, obviously, gardeners, gardeners and, you know, Amazon drop-offs and all that stuff, the police is here, they, they'll know. We're looking at the people that are parking there for a long term, the whole day. Those are the ones that are really making the grass and the sodded areas die out, because they're not getting any sunlight. That's what we're really gonna be trying to target is those, and this is just, we're trying, to trying to see how it works and how we can unveil this program a little bit further. This is not the only area that has a parking issue. We have, we're not, we're not gonna discuss it, because nobody's here from that area, but we also have the same parking issue right behind where the shopping center, where the Italian restaurant is, and the karate school. That's overflowed into those side streets and has become a severe issue there as well, before it became an issue at Sylvania, quite frankly. Sylvania is just a bigger issue. There's a lot more of it than right there. So, this, it's becoming an ongoing concern for us as a city on how are we gonna handle this. We also had the same issue behind the apartments on 8th Street where we also put up no parking signs, and that's, no overnight parking, and that's worked really well, and, and not because she's here, but we've had a vice mayor and a mayor and a commission that really do listen to the residents, and we as an administration are here to do what they're asking us to do, and we're trying to resolve the issue. So, we understand this is a short-term experiment, and we'll see how we unveil it as we go along. What we don't want to do is punish the residents, and what we don't want to see is have the residents have to deal with all these cars. I've been out there myself on numerous, numerous occasions. The cars are parked illegally. They're blocking, when you're turning out of the street, you can't even see which way you're going, because they're parking right at the angle, and it's, it's a disaster, it's a disaster waiting to happen, and we know it. We've been trying to work. If you work for the school board, you know it's, and we have great representation from the school board. It's really, it's the, it's been a challenge, but they've been really trying to work very hard with us, and we'll continue to work through it. We'll, we'll continue to work through it. We'll, we don't, I don't give up, and I know that my vice mayor sends me emails very constantly about your area to ensure that we take care of this, and we will, one way or another, and if we have to expand it or modify the programs we go along, we will. We just want to make sure that our residents are happy.
Thank you. I, I will say, I work from home now. I'm not a teacher anymore, and I have noticed a difference as of Monday. I don't have the, I don't wanna jinx myself, but I don't have the full parking all day outside my house in the swale. As of Monday, the dismissal is still thing, like you said, but it has gotten better, so hopefully, it's only gonna continue to get better from here.
Any other questions from anybody or concerns?
Thank you so much. I live just across from the main entrance of the school, 5915 on 16th, and I really appreciate it, all the effort that the city has been doing since I lived there 20 years ago and before that, my parents. Yes, I saw a difference this week, but I still have a big concern, and it's with the civics and education of the parents that goes and park and leave the car illegally parked, and when you ask them, "Please, I need to leave home," and you are, you're not blocking my entrance, they get aggressive. So, probably you, from, from the city hall, you can talk to school, director of the school, and they can have, you know, like a meeting with parents and say, "Hey, I don't mind that you park there for a second, and the kid goes inside. I don't mind that, but if I need to leave and you are blocking my entrance, just imagine in front of the school." And they even, you're asking, "Please move," they go, "Why should I move? This is not you. This is part of the city." And they go, "Relieve." You know, you know, Yvonne, I'm not lying.
I'm sure you guys have seen Yvonne walking around that neighborhood.
Thank you for, thank you for the work.
We understand, we understand the concern, and that's why we, we decided to opt, and the commission decided to opt into trying to go into a little bit of enforcement, just to try to nudge that conversation with the school itself forward a little bit. Look, this is, we don't want to be giving out tickets. That's not, that's not our, that's not our goal here. Our goal is to make sure that everybody coalesces and lives together. They don't block the driveway. They don't block the, the safe side triangle from a corner street. We want to have a dismissal that works, and I'll give you an example. Down the street, you have the charter school. The charter school's dismissal works perfectly. They line up on the street, go through the parking lot, come out the backside. They call out the kids, they bring the kids to the car, and there's no issues. There's nobody parking. There's nobody parking on the street. There's nobody blocking anything. That one works well. There's no reason why we can't try to emulate that at the school, but it's, it's their own, they are their own entity, and we're having, you know, it's like everything else. We're starting with the school first, because that's really our first point of contact, and I don't always want to have to go to the level above, but we've have had a lot of success going to the level above and having it come filtered back down to the school, but we want to have a good town-gown relationship, and that's not really what our intent is. Our intent is, is come up with a way to make this work for everybody.
Mr. Manager, may I for a second? I'm sorry to interrupt. If anybody has a comment, I'll hand over the mic right after this, but I didn't get to meet all of you, but I'm the vice mayor, Natalie Miliana Orbis, and I wanted to thank you all for being here. You're here because we have, we share the same concern. I was completely outraged when I began getting phone calls about this. It's unacceptable, what's going on, 100% unacceptable, and I will not stop until we find a happy medium. I know it's not fully the school's fault, and I know it's not the city's either, so we have to find a medium between the two. We have been in conversations with the school. I know that administration has met with the school several times, with the principal. I've, I've met with our school board member, and I have made an attempt to explain what's going on. A lot of the times, there's miscommunication, or they don't fully grasp what's going on, because they're not living it every day as, as you are, right? Just as I didn't know exactly the extent of what was going on, but we understand. And it goes deeper than something that we can solve, because there was a state mandate, as our manager explained. It goes deeper than putting a resident parking sign, and it will not be resolved overnight, but we will continue working on this. This is not, you know, as he said, if we need to amend the ordinance to include the street that you're affected by, we'll amend it. If we need to continue working with our school board member, with the school, we're gonna continue doing it, because it's not acceptable what's going on, and I, as a resident, would be outraged if this was happening in front of my house. We can't allow this to continue the way it is. So, we're gonna continue working on it. I appreciate you all being here tonight, and I encourage you to continue letting us know, giving us a status update as to what's going on. And we are working with the school board, letting them know exactly what is happening, because I understand that it's also not the school's fault, and I conveyed, I'm a parent of two kids, right? So, I know that when the school wants to convey something to the parents, we have an app, we have emails. They can explain and educate the parents of the students as to what's going on, so I've encouraged that. But the school, as our manager said, is another entity, so we can only persuade, encourage, and urge them to do these things, but we can't make them do them, right? But we will continue working on that, and, and I, I'm, I fully understand, like I said, the, what you feel and your anger, and I want to continue working on resolving that, okay? I'll leave you all my phone number and my email, and I encourage you to reach out to me with whatever concerns you have. I will stay here for the rest of the meeting, but I, I just wanted to, you know, say that and know that we are working diligently on this issue.
This is my, my last ask. Because we attended one of these meetings for that special grant for the bike pass, and at that meeting, I mentioned, you know, if the city can consider building a curb on that street where we live, between 62nd Avenue and 59th Avenue. There are no curbs whatsoever in that street, like there are up and down on 62nd, and that actually helps the Amazon trucks, the FedEx trucks, the mailman trucks, right? So, they can have an actual area to park, rather than for them to park in these easements where it just keeps flattening out and, and into a dirt road, pretty much, and I wanted to bring this up again about building curbs and what is the city going to do about that, and I'm gonna, you don't have to answer it today, but I just want to make sure that's in the record. It's been asked now twice by me. Because I, I think curbs actually help people, pedestrians, you know, drivers figure out where they should park and where they shouldn't.
That is one of the things that we've been looking at, and thank you for being here. Thank you for being here for that grant meeting. That is one of the things that we're considering. We're still in the early stages of that. That takes a while, because unfortunately, that is also a, although the streets in our city, it's a county street. They have the final say on anything and everything that we change on that street. So, there is a process that sometimes takes a lot longer than people would like to see it, including myself, to get through, and we're working through that process with the county right now, and I'm just, and the city engineer's here. You can ask him where we're at with it, but it's, we're working through that process, and we'll get, we'll get to a resolution somewhere down the road on that, and that's, but that, that's gonna take longer than a lot of the other things that we talked about right now, and I want to piggyback on something that the vice mayor said about the entity. Yes, I don't even think the school board understood how they were doing the dismissal at the school until we had a phone call with them, because I've been bringing it up, but until I actually sat down with them, I think it was yesterday, and I said, "They're opening up the emergency exits and letting the kids out that way." It didn't dawn on them that the parents were parking to pick up the kids. So, we're gonna continue to nudge. We're gonna continue to have dialogue, and we're gonna continue to try to persuade them to become good team members for all of us.
Sometimes in the rain, and get off their car to walk, if they're lucky, one house, but if they're unlucky, four houses down, to pick up their kid at the door, who is then also drenched in water unless they have a raincoat. So, I have heard that side as well. So, I guess the last thing I'll say is, I love these meetings. I love being able to come to these meetings and like sharing ideas and having you guys hear us and us hearing you, because we also don't know what you do, what to go through all this process. And without dating myself, I am, I am 35, but there is older people that are not on Instagram, and they don't know about this meeting. So, I sent an update through the change.org petition that I started, I don't know, like a month and a half ago, and that went out to everybody on Monday, and I don't know if anybody's here, because they got that email, but I know that not, probably a lot of people saw your post. And I would say, like, I know we have a mailing list, an email mailing list, because I get the offices closed for Memorial Day and, you know, all that fun stuff. So, it would be beneficial to just post that same flyer and send it to that same mailing group. I think that that would be very good. We don't need the flyer printout. That's expensive, but I think the email list would make a really big difference.
And with that, I will say, if you're not on our email list, please get on our email list. We're trying to grow that as much as we can. That would be the easiest way for us to be able to reach out to all the residents. I know that Yvonne's been out there handing out the flyers to everybody that's coming and going for the school. We've, go ahead.
I did go door to door to everybody on that map and dropped off a flyer. I knocked on doors. I dropped on, I spoke to residents.
Well, we fully, I, I know for a fact that she's been out there at least three times, maybe four. That's probably why you didn't get it, and, and, and I already noted that, and we're going, you know, and the vice mayor's here, and she's already been on the record. If we have to amend it, we'll, we'll be more than glad to do so. Bottom line is to make our residents happy. That's what we're here for. That's our job. That's my job. That's everybody's job here, is to make our residents as happy as possible and feel proud of the fact that they live in West Miami. Then I want to thank you guys all for here. This is the first town hall I've had here. We used to do them more off, more, oh, is there another question?
I think a lot of people are not here because they saw the signs go up.
Yeah, also.
And they were like, "Oh, good, this is taken care of. The police will give tickets, and that will solve it." Because, you know, you get a ticket every day.
And like I said, and like I said before, I'd rather have compliance, I'd rather have compliance and reach an agreement than have to go with a heavy hand of giving out tickets, but we'll do what we have to do to make sure that it works. I will say that I would like to, this is the first one we've done here, I think this is the best way for me to be able to understand and for the commission to be able to understand what the residents are thinking. So we will be doing these, not regularly, but every once in a while, especially on hot items like this, that really do need to have the special attention, so that you understand that we're not ignoring our residents and that we are responding to your needs. I want to thank you all for being here, I want to thank our Vice Mayor for being here, I want to thank staff for being here, and most importantly, I want to thank you all for being involved in our city.